United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation under God, in which the whole world is ours.
Roll call.
Tom Dick Jr.
Here.
Lisa Petrowski.
Here.
Dominic Rivera. James Rollo.
Here.
Severo Marto.
Here.
Bill Cornrum. George Kloss. Mayor Margaret Steer.
All right, thank you.
The Cornrums is still in the hospital.
Okay. An executive session was held this evening at 5:30 to discuss legal matters. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last council meeting, March 10, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, citizens' comment. First up is Colleen Sneltzer for Kenny Avenue.
Hi.
Hello.
I wrote notes because I'm not real good at speaking in front of people, but I'm here because of my street, Kenny Avenue. We have a tenant on our street who's... Their garbage is everywhere, always. I brought photos so that you can look at how bad it was. My husband's 85 years old and he's cleaned it up. And I don't know what to do to get it to stop. Nick has been up several times, you know, she just... Her kids just kicked out one of the panels in her garage door, the next property down. If they eat snacks, everything's just thrown all over the ground. There's trash constantly all over our street. Right after garbage pickup, she doesn't have lids for her garbage cans, they don't tie the garbage closed, and they've been known to throw them from the top railing down onto the side walls. You know, we've lived here, we own our home, we own two properties that we pay taxes for. My husband has lived in our home for 85 years, he's 85 years old. I've been there for 62 years. And our town is going to trash. It's gonna look like Braddock before you know it. I'm ashamed to tell people that I'm from Pickett. When they ask me, I say, "I live just outside of Monroeville." And I really think if you don't do something about it now, this town is done.
Well, I know Nick has brought us before the magistrate and cited them several times.
Right.
Yeah, great, definitely great. Right, and that's about where we're stuffed with too, however, I was thinking about it. When we have that three-strike rule with tenants, since Nick has already written citation after citation, announced before the magistrate, can we involve the police to make this a three-strike?
I'll... Just because of the nature of that, I will offline have a discussion, and I would like to see those pictures, please, ma'am. Let me just Matt Colina, by the way, solicitor for the borough. I'll have a discussion with chief and Nick about that, just given the nature of it, and see what our options might be.
I mean, she's a problem tenant. There's all kinds of people living in the house. It's supposed to be a single mom and two little boys, seven and eight years old, who are... I mean, that property was just redone and it was done beautifully. We were very excited about it. The kids have thrown, kicked the... On the third floor, they're screaming from the new windows. They throw trash cans out the windows, I mean, and there's people there. There's a tall, skinny guy, I think might be her brother. I think these people are babysitting. I've seen three pregnant women over there. I mean, if you look at the amount of trash, that's not the amount of trash for a single mom and two little boys.
Well, we'll definitely, with Matt and our code and police, we'll get on top of that. This is the first time that I know council's being made aware of the ongoing issue there on Kenny, so...
Right, that's why I wanted to come.
Yeah.
Let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to... I come up the street one day to find my husband, who's 85, bending over on the street because he takes pride, this is our home.
Yeah.
Picking up the trash off the street, he almost fell over. Let's see. The mini bike issue.
Yeah.
Now they have an electric bike, which is fine. I don't want to make problems. I mean, kids are kids. They're gonna play, and they have electric bike, that's fine. But you'll see gas cans. These little kids are handling those gas cans, and they're left on the sidewalk in front of our house. It's a fire hazard. I mean, there's no discipline whatsoever from anybody, and no pride. She has no respect and she doesn't teach her kids respect.
We'll definitely see if there's something we can do with...
I appreciate it.
Maybe get in touch with landlord or something.
Well, the landlord lives on State and handled by an agency somewhere in Pittsburgh.
Right. Anything we can try to do, we will do it.
I hope, because it's your town too. It's not much up on the hill, but it's bad down here.
Is that the same one that Nick and I went to a couple of years ago, regarding the raccoons and that?
I think she's talking about her children.
She likes to say, "If you look at those pictures, that's not from raccoons. There's boss."
No, 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 there isn't, but I think, I wonder if that's the one a few years ago?
It's right next to the one.
I remember walking up steps similar to that, and it was a wreck. It was a mess.
Right. It's a same, it's a same.
It's the same one, but they cleaned it, whoever, and then somebody out of town wiped it.
All right. We have a beautiful back porch. Summer's coming, and I want to be able to enjoy that porch, and we're not gonna be able to with things that are growing. I mean, there's two men in a fight there. They don't even live there. The police were up for that. I hope there's reports on those.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure there is. I was just gonna address to you too, since you live on Kenny. I remember the residents on Kenny was complaining about a certain address, and we wiped out the whole house.
Oh, I know, I know. Thank you, thank you for that.
We had the landlord change the locks, and nobody's there anymore. So like they said, you live here, I live here, they live here, so what we will do, I promise you, it will be addressed. We talked before.
Yeah, yeah, we heard it.
Yeah, we will definitely.
I mean, we tried to make her feel welcome. I even offered her, my niece says, "I have an extra garbage can I don't use," and we got her a lid for it. I mean, she just doesn't care, you know?
I understand.
They're not on here.
Same that people are like.
Like I said, we'll get with our solicitor, see what we can do extra on top of everything that Nick has done, so...
Okay, I appreciate it.
No problem.
I think that's it. The cans of gasoline.
Yep.
No, I think that's it.
Thank you.
And then the two men that were fighting, then they ended up threatening my neighbor across the street, her husband, you know? We shouldn't have to deal with that.
Not at all.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you. Stacy, about Kenny Avenue, as well, is it the same or different?
Some of them are the same.
Okay.
But I have cameras on my house. I have three different cameras. Two stable, one moving. I've been going back through a little bit about the trash. You know, her husband on 4-1 was picking up trash. The motorbike, we already discussed that one. On 4-4, I caught him on camera. This is a skinny gentleman that is supposed to be babysitting the children. Three kids were walking past the house, and one kind of went like this because he saw him sticking out his head out of the window. He said, "Why are you waving, bro?" "I don't know you, nigger." That's the type of language...
We don't need to retake that, though.
Okay, my apologies, but... He's also harassing my husband and me. We can't, when we get in the car, we get different comments made. He's sticking his fingers up in my cameras.
Have you made police reports for me?
I've made some reports. The latest one I did not make was April 11 because I wanted an opinion from Tara.
Okay, well, Tara, don't supersede the chief. Here, here's my cards, but I want you to do is send me all these videos and let me take the investigation over, okay? It will be my investigation. That's the chief of police.
I know.
All righty?
Okay. He's telling him to stay away from the kids. He's in the doorway. Called him...
Yeah, I understand. It's all vulgarity. Yeah, I understand.
It's all vulgarity that we can't walk outside our cars.
Right, right.
I have to go out with him because he has a temper. I don't want him going to jail, you know?
Yeah, I'm not trying to cut you off, just to say, this is a public recorded meeting. I think that a lot of your concerns would be first best addressed with the chief, in the nature of whom.
Yeah.
In the sensitive nature of whom, I think that that would be a better avenue at this particular moment in time.
Okay. Because now, you know...
Concerns noted. I just... Take, trust me.
I think he'll get their trash too, like she said. She gets it in the back, I get it in the front. The kids running up and down the street.
Okay. I would address what you just mentioned, all that with the chief.
Please.
And we will work on as a group with code and the police on the trash issue.
Okay, what about the kids running around in other people's yards?
That's a trespass issue that can also be taken up with.
You can work with me on every one.
I mean, I caught them walking in and they filled the empty complex next door. I mean...
Yeah, that's definitely also a police issue if they're on your property.
Could I get these to the solicitor?
Yeah.
Do you want these in there?
I saw them. I looked through them. I understand the issue. They're originals, I don't think.
All right. Peggy Aggett, Dig 6th Street.
Yeah, mine's small. The planters in front of that church, you know, on 6th Street, can they move them back a little bit? Everybody's cars, when you come up and you try to park there, you're banging into them.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, some of them trees should be cut down because they're being cut, shaped down a little bit because they're catching your face or, you know, they're really spreading out. If they can just move them back a little bit, that's all, you know?
Okay.
I don't have anything else to complain about today. Isn't that all?
Well, that's good news. Thank you. All right, Tom Dick, Fire Department.
Yes. On behalf of the Fire Department, they asked me to come up and ask if there was a surplus in the safety fund, if it was possible they could make an extra payment on the engine issue. I know there's our payment coming up, but if at all possible, if they can make an extra payment on the safety fund, it'd be appreciated.
Tom, right now, there's really an auto surplus.
Okay.
We have the $25,000 we already have budget, and we have another $10,000 budget for equipment for the fire company.
Okay.
So, you know, you can use the extra 10 for the... To put towards the truck.
Okay, we'll talk about that. But I just wanted to see what, you know, surplus was in there, if we could use it. If that's the case, that's fine. We'll work around that, and maybe another time we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that is it under citizen comment. Moving on, Mayor Betsy Stevens.
The Hickcar and Police were 223 calls. Were 223 calls in the month of March. We collected 125 parking tickets.
Chief. Chief, you have those pictures.
The magistrate awarded $16. Our magistrate, 359, and the county was 209, and there were no quality of life tickets paid. And that continues by...
All right, thank you. Personnel, Dominic is not here, so Jim is going to read for him.
I'd like to remind that the borough, Big Chair and May Council meeting is gonna be changed. It'll be on May 19, 2025. Like to have a discussion of the flood project, and a motion to hire Century Engineering to complete the easement acquisition process.
I can explain what's going on with that. So after we did Tanah Street Bridge, the state contacted me and said, "Hey, you're getting money for the bridge, let's get moving on the flood to full project." So I talked to Matt, talked to Don about hiring Century Engineering. Again, they're the ones that did the original property acquisition along with, I think Betsy did some, and Walter Beck did some, and there's a handful that property is changed on the temporary easements that we need. So they haven't been reported, so they definitely have to be changed, and then they have some thoughts on the railroad because they work with the railroad on some PennDOT contracts. So there's $72,000 in the Dirty Cam Run Fund to offset these costs. I don't think they'd be very much for the temporary easements. It's really just now contacting the owners and explaining things to them and getting them. But I've already been in contact with them. The person that used to work there, that handled a lot of stuff for us, he just left a month ago, but there's another engineer that's familiar with it, and they have all the records. So I think it would be wise to hire them, to have them try to finish up those temporary easements. Get some of the questions answered that the state has on if somebody's married or single, and hopefully get something going with the railroad.
I met last week with Senator, PA Senator, whatever, Nick, that's the term, however you say his last name, Nick?
Nick.
Senator Nick, thank you, Nick, if you watch this. He, I kind of gave him like a little update on like what the dirty, he didn't know what the Dirty Cam Run project even was, so I kind of just gave him some updates. He said if he could help in any way, put pressure on Norfolk Southern to get the easements, that he would be happy.
Yeah, I also forwarded everything to, on Norfolk Southern, to Brandon Mark, over to office, and to see if they can help.
Well, the other thing might, I think maybe I didn't tell you, the gentleman that was working for Norfolk Southern that was handling this fire, so they have a new regime in there now.
Yeah.
I don't know, but that was, I heard that. Actually, I heard that the night of the last street work. So nothing's happened for them in this once.
Does anybody want to make a motion to hire that engineer?
I might make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And some of, we need a discussion on the big RT as to the bus lines?
Well, if anybody's been following the headlines, the Port Authority is cutting some buses. They sent probably every municipality that it affects a form letter to send to various other political appointees and elected officials, governors, senators. So I just thought, you know, if you guys are the ones that need to make that decision, if we want to throw our support behind the Port Authority's request for additional funding from the federal government and the state government.
I, I mean, I'm split on it, but they're not cutting all of our routes, correct? There's still, there is still a morning and evening route that will still be available for residents. So, and we don't really know as council or as the local government what they did with the prior money that was given to them for whatever. I know if it was up to me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it, but it's up to council if somebody wants to make a motion on it. Moving on.
There's no answer.
I'd like to make a resolution, 2-2025, for full-time employees to respond to fire calls during work hours.
In town or out of town?
Mainly in town.
In.
It's been an issue where they have trouble manning the truck, and I know Mike Reeves a couple of times has asked if he could go, and I've told him, yes, he can, especially if it's in town. Nick has gone. Nick has punched out a couple of times to go because he was the only one that could drive the truck, I guess.
In town, I don't see a problem with it.
Well, it's all outlined in the policy.
I think that's how it is now anyway, is that...
There's no policy.
Oh, is that policy?
There's no policy. So if, for example, Nick left and went on a fire call, there's nothing backing him up saying that he couldn't be, you know?
Right, if a resident would call us up and say, "Hey, I saw your code enforcement officer hit a fire, why isn't he operating tickets for trash?"
I don't think that anything, don't take us the wrong way, that Nick or Mike are doing on their regular job that's emergency that couldn't be done when they get back from a fire call.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, that's well said.
I think a house on fire is a little more important.
And I know a lot of these calls that come in, just from experience, that may be like a gas leak or something, or a carbon dioxide worm, a lot of these calls are handled within 10, 15 minutes, and they're back within that time. So if, for example, you know, Nick just goes to drive, he'll be back in 15 minutes. And as you asked about the out-of-town calls, it is highlighted in the thing that Mike wrote up and that we have drafted, if you wanted to read that, but I think if there's like a serious incident out of town in Wilmerding or something, there was an exception made that they may go, but their pay may be docked for that, you know, because it's out of town, they're not serving the borough. So that's just something that was in there that was written. There's dog.
There's one thing about them being actively, actively involved with this thing.
Involved, indeed, yeah.
Or if it's just sitting back waiting.
Right.
To be on call.
Yeah, because the Fire Department has the guys right now, like a couple guys that are night turn that are available. So, for example, if Mike and Nick were the supplement to those guys, we're fully staffed 24/7 at that point, which is a no-brainer in the environment for it, so...
It gives the borough some protections too, if, you know, if work is called, if they get hurt on the fire, it's not gonna be covered under the penalty, you know, they're being paid by us during work hours. It spells out there that they'd be covered by the fire company's workers.
So that never would punch out for that? Are you saying you're paying them, it's voluntary?
No, it's, so in town, they would be paid, like they wouldn't have to go and punch out. They still have to get permission. Like he has to let Mark know or give me a call and say, "Hey, there's a fire at such and such house, I'm gonna jump on the truck and absolutely go." But if he says, "Turbo Creek needs a backup, I'm gonna jump on it." If you really have to go, then you punch out.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, the motion has been made. Any second?
One second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. Opposed? Motion passed.
Okay, that's all dominant.
Do you want to do it that way?
That's all dominant, yeah.
Right, Tom.
I just wanted to make a note. All right, anything else, Jim, under personnel?
Uh, no.
Well, no, wait, now, since Don's here.
Don can make the motion.
Don can make the motion on the plan.
Can you make this motion?
Since Don came in, he's gonna take over his section, and there's a motion that he is going to read.
Oh, I have to make Jim important? I make a motion to appoint Jim Rollo to the planning commission for a five-year term.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Jim, are you up for five years? Can you handle that? I'm planning on being here.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, all opposed? Passed. Thank you, Don.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, Streets, George, he is not here. I will read for him. We have reviewing streets for paving. So I know we have a list here on council. I know there's quite a couple bigger numbers on there that maybe we may have to apply for grants or whatever have you. And what I marked on mine, my paper, and council can certainly discuss if they agree or disagree, is obviously Center Avenue, where it is above, is pretty bad. I have that as a yes, at least from, you know, need-wise.
For what?
I have School Street also, but I know we talked about that, discussed that, that I may be able to wait a year. And then I also have Highland Avenue and Third Street. And then we were talking, correct me if I'm wrong, like the Britton Avenue, we got $100,000 for. We maybe only utilize that for the Britton Avenue and Highland, 11th Street area?
Yeah, based on what I guess Don and Dan discussed, but I don't know, I mean, it's in bad shape, and all of Britain's in bad shape, and we can't do anything till we hear about the second phase of Britton anyway, so it's really... Are we better off just waiting to see if we get that second phase, and then move along, so everything can be done as a whole? If we don't get it, then fix that, fix that.
Yeah. I have it written down as grant money, just because it is Britton Avenue and we have the grant money, or whether we get more grant money for Britton Avenue.
Do you think that intersection could be done for the condition we have in Britton? That's formed, I mean, it's fixed too.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is just, you know, the estimate that you have in front of you.
Yeah.
This is for 11th from Highland to Britton, so do you have to say we're gonna extend that a little bit?
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just 11th, 11th to Britton.
Where the dip is.
And what are you talking, how far, just that intersection? From Britton to Highland?
Yeah, from Britton to Highland.
Okay. Are we crossing Britton? You know what I mean?
Like going the whole span of Britton.
Britton comes up 11th, and it continues, and this whole area is bad. That, this is where that's formed, you know, 11th goes off.
Yeah, I believe this is for the whole bad area, but it does, it's not a storm sewer, which, you know, could be an extra, we could put it in. If we're interested in that under 2025 paving program, we could put it in as an alternate to see what the price is.
Are we talking about that big divot?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's originally what I brought up way back whenever about us doing.
When it's done.
Yeah, it definitely needs it. So, I mean, in my opinion, that's, those ones that were just mentioned, I think if we can, I mean, depending on cost, if you link all that together, I mean, obviously there's two big, bigger points.
What I've done in the past, and I've do this in almost all the paving programs we've done, is I'll have base bids, contractor, the stuff that we think we're gonna do.
Yeah.
And we'll put an alternate, and if that cost comes in under, we can always make the decision on what that alternate was, and like, for instance, if your budget was a hundred thousand, and, you know, we do the base bid, and that's 90, and then the alternate comes in at 30, then you guys can make the decision on whether you have 20,000 extra dollars to get the alternate done.
Or we cut something out, or, yeah.
I have a question, though. So the end of 9th Street, where they've been ripping up for the gas leak over and over and over again, wasn't the gas company gonna fix that part for us?
They have to.
They should fix that whole area. It's a mess.
I think they're with 9th and Britton, or...
9th and Britton, yeah.
If they got it.
They did the sidewalks.
Yeah, I saw they did the sidewalks, but isn't the street still patchy?
The street's still patchy. They have to fix that, and then the water company just replaced the house on the corner, the roundhouse, 9th and Britton.
Yeah, they did that, yeah.
Yeah.
From what I heard, from what I heard, they're supposed to come out during the weather, when the weather breaks and do all of it.
Yeah, but my question is, is I don't want to be ripping up and doing things that they're gonna pay for, and we don't have to pay for.
Well, they're not gonna, they're not gonna rip the bricks up, so our brand is the bricks.
They're just gonna break some blackouts.
Yeah, rip the bricks up, do the base, I think repair curb.
Yeah, they're gonna be able to...
They're gonna be a whole reconstruction of Britton Avenue.
And they're pretty much done ripping up everything up there themselves, so once we do this, they'll come back and repair it up.
Should we go by most needed, or should we go by best for the bucks, the more we can get for our money done?
My opinion, everything on the solicit.
Yeah.
So I don't know if I could...
So if that's School Street, can we wait, and we wait on School Street?
School Street's bad, the whole way up to Monroeville, so I'll see if the Monroe, if the Monroe's gonna fix it, then we might be able to piggyback with that.
They patched, like, they patched, like, did some really good patchwork about two weeks going up School, Rose Crest. I mean, you can even tell some places are like the silk, it looks like they just patched a lot of those holes. So I don't know if they still intend on paving it.
Agatha seems a little pricey to me.
It's a long street.
It's a wide street, really.
It is a wide street.
It is wide.
Well, that's, I think that's Wall Avenue from Agatha. From Agatha. They have to number that part.
Oh, from.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe.
Yeah, so we added to the... I mean, if we weren't through Agatha.
Since Don knows how structurally unfit things are.
Yeah, you should give us the new rankings. Can you rank these for us?
Jim has asked, and like, I can.
Okay.
I mean, I think they only done, I mean, you can make a case for any of them.
Yeah.
But I, I, I could. I could rank a few ones, I think.
Go for it.
Rank them, and then maybe we can get a clump together and get a, a more like a, a together bid for doing all of it.
What would probably help me out in building this car, because I knew.
And what did we say, a hundred?
About a hundred and sixty, so honestly, like, the Center Avenue, Highland Avenue, twenty-fourth and fifth, Third Street, six hundred block, and Eleventh Street, Highland and Britton Avenue, if we have a grant for that, ever install.
Yeah.
And then, um, the alley right outside of our public works building, is going to price it in value, but maybe if Don would include that in. I mean, it's like, if you, if you come out of our public works building, you make a left on the emergency alley, it's just.
Merchant's path, the whole way.
Yeah.
I hope we get that.
The gas companies, the gas companies repair in a section where contractors do an ad, he gave less than price. Don said it's, it's a little high, so maybe if we incorporate that, it was a hundred and sixty-two. We can just incorporate it in our, our bid.
So now you have a budget and you can go without.
Yeah, I'll, I'll build a program, and like I said before, I'll put together a base bid that should be up to around a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
You know, I'll go with it right away. And then I'll, I'll put an alternate, just to give it.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thank you, that will help.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve a handicap parking space at three sixty-five Third Streets?
How many are there on that street?
Doesn't matter, second.
All right, motion made and seconded, is that verified, everybody, Mayor and Chief, that they're on Earth Street Handicap?
It's his first on Earth.
They said it's one, they're going to, they're going to have to cop check it.
It's a heavily parked street, I was surprised.
Oh, there's, there's no other handicaps possible, that's the number one.
I don't think so.
It's called the bumper, I don't know. So now I thought they were.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve final payment to El Grande Industries based on engineer's recommendation. Motion for made and seconded, questions, I do have one. Is this the company that did the Taylor Avenue project?
They did, they did the, uh, the upper part of Island and, uh, Twelfth Street and, um, section of Eleventh.
Yeah, so it was the company that did the paving.
Okay, and they're all good and everything's, all right.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible motion for the three hundred block emergency alley.
Well, that was pretty much covered under.
I think we'll just add it into the, you know.
Add it to the twenty, twenty-five program.
All right, that's it, under streets, Parks and Recreation, Lisa.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve Pickar and Assembly of God's application for the field on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, for spiritual awakening and prayer for the community.
Second. Pastor Bob couldn't be here tonight, and he did want to ask if, he asked me to pass his on if he would waive any fees.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion for it?
Friendly amendment to the motion made on the floor.
Yeah, yeah, after the motion.
All right, motion, motion made and seconded to approve Assembly of God's application for the field with a waiving of the fees. All questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Uh, motion to approve the women's softball team to use the baseball field from May to August on Thursday and Friday evenings. I'm guessing this is dirty dogs.
Yes.
Correct.
I, I second that, but, um, what about that project, have we heard anything about the grant? Does that interfere with them at all, like those?
You thought the sports company?
Yes.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll, we'll be doing it this year, it won't affect the field, but it'll affect the park.
Okay. As long as it's money.
Park over here.
Yeah, okay.
We may have to tell them that, but they may have to use the other one.
Yeah. All right, second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, I had one other thing I wanted to bring up, um, I think I've only really talked to Mike about this briefly. Nick and I actually talked about forever ago, um, I think when we were all on the Park and Rec Committee, about doing movie nights, we did do a few, they didn't do Ciberate, but, um, we were always afraid to put movies on, because you have to have licensing to show movies to the public. So I made a few phone calls about two weeks ago, why can't we team up with somebody to do this? So Monreville pays a licensing fee to show movies in their parks. They actually, um, told me to talk to the library, the library has licensing for almost every studio. So I did, um, talk to a gentleman named Corey about potentially teaming up with them and doing a movie night in the park, um, we would just have to like have, they would have like a little table set up, and any, um, flyers or anything we put out would have to say like sponsored by, um, Monreville Library. So what I would like to do, we are not, from what I understand, no, there's no plans to do a fall night market this year, so I thought maybe we could do a fall movie night and have a couple of vendors out in the field down here, um, ask, you know, the nonprofits, this is all just discussion, by the way, there's nothing, nothing concrete or a date picked or any of those things, but do you think that that's something people would come to? With a movie night festival?
Yeah, it's, it's the right movie.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, and they have licensing for all kinds of stuff, so.
Did you, what age are you trying to impact or draw?
Well, at first I was thinking twenty-one and over, and I still kind of am thinking twenty-one and over, and then see if maybe a tiny club wanted to set up a booth down here again and serve some alcohol. I mean, it's, it's all just ideas being thrown around, right? And I thought about making like a, a punch card, you can only have two drinks, but that doesn't mean Dom's not going to give me his punch card, and I can go have four drinks, like, you know.
What kind of responsibility is it going to put on Scott?
I mean, I, I would hope everyone in the past has been respectful of these things, so if we can keep it that way. Yes, it's just, just an idea, let's do this out there, so, you know.
Good to think about it.
Yeah, we can further discuss, but, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Finance, economic development, um, Bill is not here with us tonight. I will read to make the motion to pay the bills as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize, Mr. President, can I also announce that the night market is on Friday, April twenty-fifth, from six to nine.
Okey dokey. Moving on to health and welfare, Deb.
Okay, uh, Mr. Turner has submitted his reports to council, and I just want to remind everybody that cleanup day will be on May third, from eight AM to eleven AM. Uh, in the morning, the dumpsters will be set up down back behind in the parking lot of the fire hall. There will be a fee for TVs forty inch or below will be ten dollars, and for T, televisions, uh, bigger than forty inches is twenty dollars. Now, with that being said, we need to set a price for the non-display electronics at ten dollars per item, which would be like microwaves, gaming consoles, so I'd like to make that motion that we could set that price at ten dollars for all the.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions?
Yes, well, there'd be a list of exactly what they'll be taking, or is it any electrons that?
Small, small electrons like that, if somebody has a stereo or, um, a gaming system that, or.
A tribe.
Yeah, they're not taking refrigerators and stuff, but like.
Yeah, they will take microwaves.
So microwave's probably the biggest thing.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and, uh, the other thing I want to remind and time note is that Protect PT will be coming in, um, April twenty-fourth at six PM down at the fire hall regarding the odor. It has seemed to cease, but Protect PT would like to follow it up with the community, so this is for everybody, and I hope people can join us. And that is it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Deb. Electric, myself, we sent out a hundred and eighty electric shut-off notices on, uh, on March twenty-fifth, and we disconnected fifty-four customers.
Do you know how many were reconnected?
About fifty.
About fifty.
There's still about four there are still off. Sometimes what happens is that a tenant moves out, some of these landlords, they just don't notify us, and then it goes unpaid, and they just turn it off, and then we go into the workday.
Surprised you don't have any.
Hey, if I was off, you say, okay, take the bill.
All right. Public safety, Jim?
I'd like to make a motion to promote Russell Wisniewski, who a full-time patrol officer at the chief's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, sir.
All righty, thank you, solicitor.
No, I'm just Republican for Mr. President, thank you.
All right, engineer.
Uh, thank you, we can talk about the paving program, so I think I got them marching orders there. Two projects we're working on right now is the Justin Fercusse Sports Complex, uh, we're, we're currently putting together specifications for the Highland Avenue sanitary sewer, so I might have talked about this a couple months ago, I think, but we're looking at an option for the Highland Avenue sanitary sewer rather than doing a traditional trench all the way down the hillside and do, or the, the sanitary sewer down the hillside. Reason why we're looking at that is the transportation, um, so you've probably seen some people up there, or maybe, maybe you have, if you have, we got a survey, go out, stakeout, where the proposed manhole would be, and then we have a geotechnologist, engineer, go up there and evaluate what he would, he would have to do, because if we were going to bore underneath, one of, one of the intermediate steps is a geotechnist to go out there and do some board holes so we know there's going to be a power down below. So the next step, we're currently waiting for a proposal from the geotech, and I'll probably be asking you at the next month's meeting to, um, to approve their proposals so that they can go out and do the test boardings, um, so that we can put together this project, hopefully this summer. Other than those two bigger projects, obviously, there's a lot of grant applications out there, and we're, we're currently putting in three new ones, one for Hillside Avenue, one for Broadway improvements, and one for, uh, the Durbin Camp sponsor, through, through various funding opportunities that are out there, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Our manager's report.
Taxes collected in, uh, the month of March was around twelve hundred dollars. Salute, get ready to send out the, uh, the tax notices, uh, so hopefully in the fall and May we start collecting some of that. Capital improvement account has three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, eighty thousand of that is for the decade control wave from the county. Electric system capital improvement has a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Liquid fuels has sixty-one thousand, eight thirty-two, liquid fuel CD now has a balance of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five, Durbin Camp run is seventy-two thousand, one hundred and five, sewer capital improvement is nine hundred and two thousand, four hundred. Public safety fund has a balance of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight. The article fund says nine-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three, where the debt is going to be transferred to pay for the sign out front. Uh, the bond repayment fund has three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and the Park and Rec Association, or Park and Rec account has a little thousand, two hundred and ten. One of the things that was discussed at the AVON conference, uh, was the use of private emails. So now, what I was saying was, uh, one of the things that was discussed at the AVON conference was the, um, use of private emails by council members, and how that subjects them to write to no reals.
Yes, sir, it does.
So I think it was suggested that everybody kind of get their own, a, a second email, it might be like Lisa P. Councilwoman Pickar at gmail dot com, you know, something like that, that, that would only be used for, um, council businesses, local business, so we can get to your personal account.
They offered them at one point in time.
I was going to say, it used to be pickarandbird dot U S, they used to have, um.
Well, you know, that was probably when we had our own cable system, and it didn't cost anything. To, to do that now, we get those increasing licenses, uh, it's four dollars and thirty-five cents per Microsoft license, so roughly for every county.
They have to pay for Gmail now, too.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, so if you want, if you want, I'd have to do extra for extra storage.
Oh, it's, uh, four, it's four thirty a month, so, you know, if that's what you want to do, that's it, that's it. We'll do, I'll contact our. Norman Allen, they have them, have them set it up.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a wise thing to do regardless of which way, because if, if, even if, if all of us went and did it individually, there's no guarantee that that's, you know.
They're going to use it for private.
Yeah, so maybe it might be best to go through the borough and just do it the way.
Well, let me ask you this, is everybody okay with first condition, last name?
Yes.
Do.
Okay. That's the way I have it set up.
And I know, it's not on the agenda or anything, but me and you were discussing business cards as well. I don't know if you, uh, you have any.
Maybe you don't have your own business cards, I do.
I don't.
I have.
I've ordered them. Mine says Pickar and Bird, yeah, I'll find you one.
Maybe I'm the odd one out.
I, I know.
Probably you think Amazon or something are pretty cheap with that, but then, you know, going to a friend of mine.
That's what I found when we were at the conferences at the Seven Springs, everybody's asking, you know, oh, you have contact, you have contact. Uh, no.
Is it?
Yeah.
I happen to know.
These are getting made in Minuteman Press, and they're not, they're not very expensive, I don't know. Do you remember how much yours was worth?
Uh, Vista Print is actually the cheapest way to go, but, that Minuteman, uh, was thirty dollars for my five hundred.
Oh, yeah, it is a lot cheaper.
Vista Print's ten dollars for five hundred.
Well, what I'm going to do is, why don't you order them and then submit to the seat, it'll be worth it.
You want to keep that as a template, so you know where you, uh, where you fit stuff?
Does everybody else have them? Do you have them? Who?
Do you have any?
Tom.
Tom.
Me. I have never had them.
I want them for games though.
So I guess get them if you want.
Anything else?
Do you have my other business card? No shame.
No shame. All right, please, chief.
Just a couple of things, I gave you some reports, obviously, first quarter year has been pretty busy for Max and I, not just the officers, twenty-sixth of Floyd, number fourteen arrests, obviously sixteen patrol apprehends, trailing track and apprehends, one bite, uh, obviously to defend the officer, but then the officer would be like assaulted by the suspect and, and then were caught in arrest. So I sent you that over, I also gave you the information on our training, sixty-seven hours, which means act sixty, the most fixed standards is sixteen hours a month times three, which would be forty-eight hours, so we put above the national standards. Just want to let you know on May eighth, I received a letter to go to Ramsey School to do a K nine demonstration for seven classes, so we, we actually got K nine color and books ordered for Max, and specifically Max's books, and we'll get, we'll do some things up there, and then May twenty-eighth, since one found out, the other got jealous, so May twenty-eighth, we got to go to Javon Stewart to do seven, uh, different sessions for Career Day. That's it, sorry about that.
All right. Busy, it's busy stuff.
Yes.
I just want to commend, I know that Max and you have, uh, done an excellent job this past month, I'm. I just definitely want to commend you for removing a lot of drugs.
You have to wait for the minutes to come out.
Sure you want to three quarters of a million dollars looks like in our cars.
Yeah.
Any adjournment?
Don't make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.